Doc, could everybody take a minute to look at the minutes? And sort of review them, if there are corrections or additions or comments?
I just have one.
Okay.
On the last page, if you look at that, I had spoken with a... Just strike the word former. He is still fully employed by the river. So, just with...
Oh, man.
Just strike the word former.
Is it Colin?
Huh?
Or the Colin?
Under old business, I have...
Oh, 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 no, no. He's the union rep.
The union rep.
Yeah. My bad, of course.
Like third rep.
Yeah, and he's currently working, so just take a look for more. Okay. That's the one you wanted, is current.
No, it's like if he was in Colin.
No.
Under old business, the GE settlement PCB updates is... That whole paragraph should just be X-ed out and replaced with... I wrote it here for you. This was so complicated that I can see, Susan. And I'll give this to you. I'll just read this, what I think it should say.
Is that what you... That's what you said?
This is... Yeah, yeah. Because you confused my trip to Washington DC with my FEMA workshop. So, unrelated to GE PCB agenda item, Ms. Fowler asked if any other commissioners attended the FEMA workshops offered in Cornwall Bridge and Stockbridge. On May 23rd, she attended the meeting in Stockbridge. It was concerning risk mapping and assessment and planning for the Husatonic watershed. FEMA is updating their 35-year-old maps and was looking to involve stakeholders, emergency managers, GIS specialists, and local planners in an exchange of data. Then going on to the GE EPA Pittsfield... I'm gonna give this to you, Susan, so I don't have to write this down.
Yeah.
On June 7th, if everybody says, "Yeah, this is pretty much as you remember what I said." Ms. Fowler drove to Washington DC for a hearing before the Environmental's Appeal Board. The EAB has a low profile outside the environmental world, but has considerable power and independence as the final EPA decision-maker on administrative appeals under all environmental statutes that EPA administers. I put that in parentheses, and I didn't make that clear. The lawsuits by GE and environmental groups and municipalities would be heard by the EAB on June 8th. The three judges had done extensive research on the briefs of all the parties involved in the GE EPA Pittsfield Superfund site and asked pointed questions during an unprecedented all-day hearing on June 8th. Front and center in GE's argument was the insistence of onsite disposal at Woods Pond on the Lee Lennox border, Rising Pond in Great Barrington, and near Forestry in Lee. Ms. Fowler had very little time to prepare for this trip as rumors that the EPA was asking for a postponement made planning difficult. However, they did show up and, in fact, the lawyer for EPA gave me a big hug and said he was really glad that the environmental groups were there. So, if everybody kind of feels like that fits in with what I had said, or if you have any other questions to maybe elucidate what went on in DC...
You're taking the whole, the entire...
Yeah, just take off the whole thing and replace it with those two paragraphs, if you would. Any objections for that?
Okay. Any other comments or corrections or...
Oh, and under that should also be, the motion was made by Mr. Gambino to reimburse me for going to the watershed FEMA workshops and, you know, just cross out watershed FEMA workshops, drive to Washington for the EAB hearing in federal court. Next time I do something that complicated, it helps me to type that, sorry.
This first paragraph, what is that replacing?
It just goes...
Do you want to review this?
It's the whole thing.
Or are we approving this?
Whole thing.
Or...
Does anybody else want to review it again?
Other commissioners? Do you want to review this revision? It's a big revision, it seems like, so did you understand?
But the FEMA workshops and the...
That I got.
It was confusing.
I started off with it because I was curious when we got to the EPA settlement, that I was wanting to know if anybody else on the commission had gone, had attended those workshops, because it was good. And so I, you know, I started on that and then changed subject to a whole other thing, to the GE PCB issue.
Okay. Everybody all right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. No further comments? All in favor of approving the minutes as corrected?
I'll move it. We agree.
Second it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Treasurer's report.
Check-in account balance is $398.01. Savings account balance is $4,492.70. Put together a few things of how we spent our money for the last couple of years for gossling. Let's see. Previous year, we did about $675 bucks. Did you say $775 bucks? The year before, $1,655.04 because we paid for a bunch of mapping with the towns. And those are from June 11th.
Is that what you're after, gossling?
There was one other thing to add to the treasurer's report. I do have the expense form from the river commission, which I did not bring last time. I did not expect any contribution to my trip down there. And I only asked, you know, I filled up the tank with gas two times $60, but if I did the 800 miles at 50 cents a mile, $400 would have been, you know, what if I was an official and unofficial capacity, I would have been paid approximately, so that's that.
Moving on. Communications. We're gonna start with our presentation from Hans Ederstrom, who's a guest today, who's gonna talk about Japanese knotweed and other... Japanese bittersweet and... What else?
We'll probably focus primarily on Japanese knotweed, shall commence.
Yeah, please do.
Could this row nudge down about two feet so Phil can come around the corner? Phil hasn't been...
It's not weed, what is it?
It is not weed that we're focusing on, so thank you for hearing me and putting me on the agenda on short notice. Christian and I have been working on invasive projects for a couple of years in North Canaan and at Regional High School. And I came into it initially through a project in Salisbury Park and Forest Commission, Washington Park restoration. I'm gonna leave you each with a booklet, which is from the Connecticut Conservation Edition, the new expanded version, along with the Vermont Ranger Conservancy chemical fact sheet and a statement on the properties of glyphosate by Dr. Todd Mirovich of Cornellia Ag实验station. We are proposing the use of herbicides. This booklet has 24 invasive plants in it. It was just updated by the Connecticut Conservation District this past October, and among them is the page on Japanese knotweed. Are most of you familiar with the plant? Is anyone not familiar with the plant? All right. The... We were hoping and maybe are achieving a kind of turning point just in the last few months, as the Salisbury Forum hosted Doug Talame to talk about native plants and their impact in the interactive diversity structure of nature, which means to insects, to birds, to other animals, and so forth. It's a dynamic that has developed over the evolution of our North American structure of nature. Following his talk, we gave two invasive workshops, one at the high school invasive management area, which is the north campus around the tennis courts, and one at the Marymore Preserve. It had 50 people turn up, which is quite impressive. Attention to Japanese knotweed really began in Canaan at the Trupi barracks, where you can see it occupied approximately a third of their acreage, coming back from the railroad tracks into their helicopter landing area. So, we, Christian and I, met with Lieutenant Baldwin and here with two guys from the Connecticut DOT who have been engaged in the mowing, but shall we say ineffectual management of that super aggressive plant. From the barracks across Route 7, it moved into our recreational Sagala field, and Christian and I took care of that last summer. We have in Canaan about 10 sites of Japanese knotweed, all of which are manageable, and we are, shall we say, in an advantageous situation. In addition, our Board of Selectmen have seen fit to sponsor our effort by acquiring a pump sprayer for the back of the tank truck and some chemistry. This is one of the DOT workers looking at the site that is of especial concern to us as it relates to the Husatonic River. This is Route 44, the curve in Green Acres. Just off camera there, 20 feet, is the Husatonic River. So, this has been treated last year. That site bends around the corner up onto one of our town roads, Deer Street.
Who treated that?
Pardon me?
Who treated that?
This is treated by Alex Arshambo with the Connecticut DOT. Yeah, yeah. So, with our town, we're working on this site to try to get that as far back from the river as possible, because from what we can tell from the area, unless Gordon has any observation from up around your farm, we have not found any Japanese knotweed south of Bartholomew's Cobble. Have you been...
Across from Box's house, there's some.
Pardon me?
Across from Scott Box's house, there's some on the side of the road there and...
Okay, so there is some there near Route 44?
No, on Twin Lakes Road.
On Twin Lakes Road, across from Scott Box's house?
Yeah.
Just where the road turns off there by the cemetery?
Well, you take, if you go down there, you get the DS curve, you'll start to see it on your right and you'll see it.
Oh, okay, so that's good to know.
You'll see it right across from his house, because Al...
That's on Town Road, we would have to address that with Curtis. The situation as we see it here, that's where the knotweed outbreak is on Route 44. Here's Route 44, here's the river. What we're trying to prevent is that from developing along here, and you're saying that there's some out in this area?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm gonna have you mark that later if I may.
And there's a patch down by the Stanley Works in Sharon.
Okay, in Sharon. Let's come back to the larger geography. So, I'm gonna give you our sort of, our entry point is Canaan onto this, starting up river. So, here we are, just doing some roadside treatment on a site that was probably transferred by roadside mowing by the town crew up there. We got excellent kill with 2% glyphosate last year on our first effort. This is the spray of the Connecticut DOT at the top of Smithville by Wildcat Hollow Road, which, and as you can see, this aggressive nature of the plant is a line of sight issue. This is a site that DOT sprayed directly across from the Skowloon Sanctuary in Salisbury, opposite the wetland, which is just below Turnip Top. It's an extraordinary preserve of 288 acres and an amazing limestone outcrop there. And we wanted to prevent this from leaping 44 and getting into that wetland, which is a vast portion of that Skowloon Sanctuary, in which it would basically take over and be uncontrollable. So, this would be considered an effective spot treatment of a section that was probably 35 feet by 20 feet in dimension, and was largely controlled by one spring. There will be a need for follow-up spraying. I gave a presentation to the Environment Committee Chairs in Hartford in April, and afterwards I went for a stroll in Bushnell Park, and you can see this weed knows no bounds, and that's why it is called the weed that took over the world. So, the world is losing diversity as a result. Riverbanks are losing stability. It's considered erosion unstable because of the nature of the roots. It is a plant that should be of high priority to this commission. When shifting your gaze from the covered bridge at Sheffield upstream, this is what you see, a belt of Japanese knotweed, where without a machete or a brush hog, you could not install, or bring in a canoe. Excuse me.
How high is that?
Uh, that, boy. In rich agricultural bottom land, I'd say that's at least 12 feet.
Really?
Yeah, yeah. Six to 12, possibly, in some cases, I could imagine a well-established blad. Higher than that, realizing that the root system is hyper-aggressive and can be as long as 65 feet from a plant. So, this is how this, its seeds, the seeds float downstream, they reestablish on some bank or island. Once established, the plant also reproduces from rhizomes coming up from the soils and with enough power to penetrate through asphalt. It's that powerful. This is the plant that occupies, is the first succession plant in, after a volcanic eruption. Yeah, yeah. It's really a remarkable plant. Okay, this is a further look upstream at that covered bridge. So, go downstream toward Ashley Falls, and you see something quite different. This is the Husatonic of my youth and of the Nature Conservancy's last great places.
Is that off the bridge?
That's looking north from the bridge and south from the bridge.
Yeah.
Here to the north, and there's Canaan Mountain to the south. All right, so the contrast is this. And for a wild and scenic designation, I would say there could be no inappropriate plant to define the borders of the river for a canoeist, for a fisherman, or a motorist. The last site, other than the one that Gordon mentioned, but on the river per se, is just south of the bridge at Bartholomew's Cobble and around one bend where there was some road fill put in and a collapsed road system there. And that is going to be sprayed, cut, this month, and then fully or sprayed in September by Native Habitat Restoration, Jestoro and Serihi. Jestoro, who's on our workshop, is a member of that. And paid for by the Trustees of Reservations, because they do not want this vista transferred, transformed into something else. This is something like 40 feet by 20 feet. It would take two gallons of herbicide to kill this. And it's a small cost to pay to protect that watershed. The plants that we looked at half an hour ago down in the Husatonic, across the covered bridge at the former West Cornwall barrage, are just, a few of them coming up already into this flowering state quite early this year, perhaps because of all the moisture we've had, and because it's a huge and well-established site. It's going to be a challenge to deal with. In our Canaan instance, I sprayed this with a four-gallon backpack sprayer standing on the back of the pickup truck, and I got 95% kill. There's one little green area coming back in here. Now, the homeowner near there, Dave Simons, is mowing that, and will keep it suppressed. Around the corner, the DOT is gonna manage another site. This is Japanese knotweed in the dormant months, when it has no foliage, and before the plants had collapsed. And this is on Route 7, just south of, near BD and Canaan. What we're trying to do here, and we met with DOT here, is we want to prevent it from getting into the road grade swamp, Robin Swamp, which is just around the corner from this little knoll. And Sharon, as an example, this is the only knotweed I could find, although there's some on Jackson Road next to Sarah Haley Coon's house. And this is across the street from Whitetail Farm. This threatens Beardsley Pond dramatically. It's within that quarter-mile range of windblown seed and so forth. One of our instincts in doing this is, inspirations really, is to protect this invasive management area at the high school, where the river is adjacent to our property and where we have dealt with six major shrub invasive invasives, and been quite successful in recapturing the landscape, as Phil well knows, from a no-man's land, really, an inaccessible property with greatly diminished value. This is a photograph of what we consider to be, to quote Bob Gambino, "a gross misuse of herbicides," i.e. railroad treatment and weed. I bring this up to say that we need to make a distinction in our minds between judicious, appropriate, and minimal use of herbicides and a gross misuse of herbicides, because this can be a hot-button issue, and there are, shall we say, appearing in the Lincoln Journal at regular frequencies, letters and commentaries which claim glyphosate to be killing us all. In Canaan, we don't buy that line, and we have taken these maps, and thank you, Michael Benjamin, for bringing them up. There's the one for Kent and Sharon and Warren. You're using the one that's for Canaan and Salisbury. And whenever we spot Japanese knotweed, we just get it down in red. So, next week, I'm going around with our town foreman. He's gonna check out all the areas that need to be brush-bladed beyond the reach of the roadside mower. The standard control strategy for this invasive is to cut in July before flowering begins, which means in a week. Let the plants regain substantial height, so there's adequate foliage to contact herbicide, which would be sprayed in September, when the nutrients of the plants are going down into the root system. It's taking the herbicide down there, it's killing the root system. So, it's a mechanical and chemical treatment method that's extremely effective. In this Husatonic area, I should have brought in the Sheffield map, but here's a little bit of, listen, I'm reading this right here. Here's Canaan, as it transitions from the Sheffield Plains and the meanders up around the cobble, and it enters Canaan, the channels are much more restrictive. And as you go down toward Falls Village, you can see the river is quite well-defined, whereas up north, there are little elbows and oxbows everywhere. So, I think we can make the case that the Canaan to New Milford, unless you're familiar with that southern end, has less of the wide sweep of bottomland farmland, which makes Japanese knotweed all the more likely. But here, going down to Kent, again, pretty well-defined topography. Christian has a suggestion about how this strategy be folded into your mission.
So, since we're reviewing our management plan, the 2006 management plan, as we go forward into fulfilling our requirements for that wild scenic designation, I suggest that the commission recommends that we manage invasive plants along this side of River Ford, or especially Japanese knotweed, but we don't want to restrict it to just one plant. There's gonna be future plants that are coming into the ecosystem, like Katsu and Kiwi vine, which are just on our northern and southern fringes of the Upper Husatonic Marsha, that we will have to manage in the next five, 10 years, besides the ones that we've had for half of a century, like multiple rows. So, including this in the management plan will help, you know, make sure that our area does not succumb to invasive plants.
I've spoken with Bob Gambino on the phone earlier today, whom Christian and I have both worked with extensively under his projects. Bob endorses this concept. His great niece, or whatever she is, his birthday party is underway right now, and Bob was not able to justify showing up here to miss that. In the immediate neighborhood, Cornwall, just across the bridge, actually, it's Sharon property, is Howie and Rick Stone's old garage, now owned by Mark Davis, whom I spoke with last year. He said, "Yeah, I'd love to get rid of that. I rack at it once in a while." And it's now encroached into Rick Stone's domestic environment. It's a mess. It mostly hugs around that north and east L shape of the garage, but it's considerably deep and on a slope and exceedingly well-established. Howie said he thinks it's been there for 20 years. And, you know, they've been mowing it, it may be less than that, but it's been there a while. Christian and I just...
They brought a lot of, they brought, just wanted to say this, they brought, the current owner squad brought in a lot of fill in there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, listen, and that's a good point. Fill is, in addition to seeds and rhizomes, transportation movement of fill is a major case of distributing this plant. We can see an example of that at the new firehouse in Falls Village, is a member of What Christian and I were suggesting, that he do brush-blade work to cut all those plants, but when we looked at it in the current situation, we were a little overdone. There is, there are patches that go down or hug the shore of the river. Our recommendation, since we have Howard, Rick Stone's permission and Mark Davis's permission to do the treatment, and Bob Gambino said he would provide his service gratis, with the exception of having his chemistry reimbursed, and we can make arrangements for that. I'm gonna have Bob take a look at that seriously and see what kind of a two-phase arrangement we could make, but it is, in its current lack of thorough management, it's working its way down from the building and now on the shore. It's gonna be dropping seeds in there. If there's floodwaters and erosion, root fragments get pulled out and sent downstream and end up on some island or bank further down. I think it's the Achilles' heel for this northern section of the Husatonic. It's the most severe outbreak of, adjacent to the banks that I know of in Northwest Connecticut. So, I guess...
Are other rivers having some more problems? I mean, is the Ploton and Connecticut?
Well, we treated, we treated a small patch on the Blackberry River on Path Foli's Farm last summer, and we got, again, about 90%, we gotta go back and do a little spot treatment. So, we're trying to protect that river. I haven't seen any on the Conca Pot, and by what I'm doing in near the barracks, I'm keeping it from coming down late road. And by what I'm doing in near the barracks, I'm keeping it from coming down Lake Road into the Conca Pot. And I know Bob has treated Japanese knotweed on the Sheepog, I think just last year. I can't give you a enumeration. Were you able to find any in the Kent section of Usatonic?
A few places. We haven't, we haven't gone down the whole river corridor there, but just around last weekend, there were a few spots.
In the upward Connecticut River in Massachusetts, north of Polio, almost entire banks on both sides are knotweed. There's a tributary that heads west up into Monroe, Massachusetts. It's one of the smallest towns in Massachusetts in the Vermont border. The knotweed goes almost all the way up to Monroe. So it's a problem.
You see that from ninety-one?
Yeah.
You draw that in ninety-one, you see it.
And along the Connecticut River, like under two, it's on both sides of the embankment. And it's a mess.
It's pretty easy to spot.
Yeah, it's really distinct.
Very dark, very dark, very, very dark.
It's very dark, tall. The stalks have stalks, look similar to bamboo, but they have like a reddish undertone. And the pedials are red as well. And then in the winter, it's burnt orange color stems that fall over. So it's really odd compared to most of our native plants.
So I'm assuming it came from Japan, since it's called Japanese knotweed. And how bad is it there? Is it good, bad? Does it have natural controls? Is it an issue for the Japanese?
Well, it's just like any other plant that comes from anywhere, they have natural controls. So honeysuckle, which comes from the Ammer region of China, is in a very similar environment as where Japanese knotweed grows as a native plant. And that's also controlled by native insects. But if we were to introduce those insects to our area, there's a high likelihood that they would attack our native honeysuckle. Or if there's an insect that attacked Japanese knotweed, it could attack other polygamy species or other plants like smartweed, which are native, which are in the polygamy genus. So it's, that's something that has been looked into, biological control. It's successful for purple loosestrife. There was a fifteen year study done by Donna Ellis with the Yukon and also Jeff Ward with the Connecticut Ag Experimental Station, which found a beetle that only ate purple loosestrife. And they tested it for fifteen years on all sorts of loosestrife species to make sure that that was accurate. It was proven and now the beetles are out there since 2012. And loosestrife is almost eradicated from situations like ours where there wasn't a lot of loosestrife to begin with. But that is something that is being looked at, but it's not successful at this point.
So is it bad in Japan? I'm still trying to figure out how the Japanese, what do they feel?
I don't really know.
Do they feel like we feel about crabgrass? I mean, is it, I'm just very curious. You know, we're painting a picture of it here as a horrible thing. So I'm wondering in Japan, what picture do they paint of it?
I don't know. The example of, the evolution of native plants among each other is about their interaction and how many interactions they have. Honeybees will be attracted to the blossoms of knotweed. However, as a severe monoculture, there's very little else going on within the native interactive environment and that plant. It is in its process of really unlimited expansion, displacing native plants. Those are the plants where the interactions occur among insects, birds, and other animals. And because they're far less aggressive, their root systems just don't have the capability of shove everybody out of this room and only replicate Tom Zederstrom's in here. Basically, that's their story of the invasives. And that's the definition, which you will see at the back page of this book here. On the very rear, there are five characteristics of, you've got your, I don't have my glasses on. Christian, read those characteristics.
All right. One, they are quick to establish, especially in disturbed areas. Two, they grow very rapidly once established. Three, they are long flowering and may produce many seeds and fruits. Four, they spread very effectively to new areas. And five, they are aggressive competitors, three of the enemies that keep them in check in their natural range.
So they got every advantage going for them and basically no disadvantage.
What foreign invasive doesn't have that going for it?
No, that is the characteristic. That's what defines them.
That's what defines them.
Yeah. It's actually defined legally. You could talk to that point.
Yeah. So per executive order during the nineteen nineties, as established by Bill Clinton, every state is responsible for creating an invasive plant council, which is in charge of reviewing or creating a list of guidelines such as this and creating a list of plants that fits that characteristic. So in Connecticut, we have the Connecticut Invasive Plant Council, which meets, I believe, every two years. And they have actually nine characteristics that judge what an invasive plant is. These are roughly the five that are consistent amongst the fifty states. Each state has a different, you know, set of guidelines, but roughly there, these five statements are consistent. And in Connecticut, we have about seventy invasive plants and that list is growing about two or three per year besides the ones that, or per meeting, besides the ones that were established at the very beginning of the nineteen nineties.
I think we're, as we drove down River Road from Falls Village, we basically were driving down through a corridor of invasives, some of which were reaching sixty feet into white pines and some red pines, which will be in a horizontal position within five to ten years as we look through the desert. The shrub invasives are widespread and then they occupy the understory. Certain invasives are hyper destructive in terms of displacing their opponents. And of course, Japanese knotweed is really among the foremost of those. There are other plants which are incongruous with our sense of nature. For example, we've just spotted five black swallowwort infestations in Salisbury. Black swallowwort mimics milkweed. So a monarch butterfly larvae will, does not distinguish between the two, but when it eats the leaves, it dies. So after that two thousand mile trip, and that's an excellent example of incompatibility, I dare say, all the efforts of monarch-loving environmentalists will fail if that plant is not controlled. So there are certain plants where we say, we draw the line at that point. We can handle a little loosestrife in the background of some wetland and we're fortunate that there are some biological agents that may be successful in controlling it. But I don't think we want to wait around until the displacement of ninety percent of the natives has occurred before we were hoping that some biological agent will either develop through good fortune or introduction by man.
Yeah. To add to that point, we're really fortunate to live in the area that we do and we're all cognizant of that because we're on this commission. And the largest value that this area has is its natural beauty. With invasives, you have the risk of destroying that. And so adding, you know, invasive management into the, into the river management plan would definitely aid in keeping the river as it is today. Or even better.
What do you see as our role in helping manage the invasives by putting it in the plan?
I see it as both an education effort and a guidance towards when conservation or development activities occur around the river, the priority should be set at the beginning to aid those efforts in the removal of invasive plants. So like with the Bend project, if there was Japanese knotweed right at the Bend, we would ask them to remove the Japanese knotweed. Yeah, exactly. And it was interesting. Tom and I were, you know, driving along River Road to get here. We noticed a lot of the shrub invasives, privet and honeysuckle in particular. And then you go right into Cornwall Bridge and there's a privet hedge, you know, right there being maintained, you know, as part of their landscape in their yard. And if renovations or something like that were to happen at that house, I would recommend that the River Commission would suggest to zoning boards and wetlands boards to make a priority that they remove those invasive plants.
That'd be good advice. Sounds to me like there's a lot of money involved, you know, when you think about it. And so are you guys finding any funding anywhere? Are you, are you finding that there isn't any funding? Is it just funding from the good graces of people that are, have the money and are environmentally aware? Or is there public funding? Is there any, is the DEP helping you at all?
Well, I raised a question with Tim Abbott as to whether or not there might be any GE funds left to help support our HVRHS invasive management project. We have an endeavor underway there that's in cooperation with the DEP and Ag Experimental Station and conforms with the Public Act sixteen dash seventeen of last year, sponsored by State Senator Ted Kennedy Jr., that promotes the creation of pollinator-friendly plantings on Connecticut DOT road sites, eight of which were installed this spring per that legislation. And Kim Stone, our entomologist with Valley Lab and Windsor, came out with Peter Pone of DEP and others to evaluate our site. So we're, we're looking for money for that HVRHS site, for example. We don't have, unfortunately, on the Earth Green Landscape Committee, a development officer. But the answer is no parent funds are available. As far as NRC, NRCS, yeah, Conservation District. There have been federal funds with grants and so forth like that. I don't know if they apply to something as, I mean, there's so many private and public aspects of the Usatonic. You would have to put the pieces together. If you find a Japanese knotweed outbreak, I think you could make the case for, listen, within a town. If Canaan can get its act together to control its Japanese knotweed, hey, Salisbury should be able to do the same thing. And show...
Cornwall does some.
Pardon me?
Cornwall does some. Well, I think a lot of this has fallen to highway departments. That highway department, Cornwall has certainly sprayed and it's certainly...
Your town highway department or your state?
Yeah, I mean, they know, they know where some of the major infestations of knotweed are now and I assume that they'll, they'll work with those. There's definitely areas which have been sprayed right on Route one twenty-eight. Just up the road from the grade school here.
By, you know, road crews.
North Canaan sent its road crew to an invasive workshop led by Nass Highway Department and the New England Botanical Society two years ago. And hey, they got educated. Those guys are interested in this subject and I'm quite proud of them, actually.
And they're seeing it from the maintenance end of their equipment. Their lawnmower blades are going in three weeks as opposed to two months now because of invasives along the roadway. So they're feeling it and they don't like that.
They're also aware that bittersweet vines kill trees, kill trees. Dead trees fall down in the highway. They got to take them down and chip them off.
Yeah. Well, you know, the homesteads use jack, the Norway maple is their favorite landscaping tree.
Yeah. Well, we've made mistakes since the eighteen hundreds. And importing exotic plants was a big fad among all botanists. And, you know, privet came in in eighteen fifty-eight and it hangs very low in the environment on that curve and then exponential growth establishes itself and it's almost climbing vertically now and appearing in places where, even on my property, there never was a privet plant in soul.
Just one suggestion and then I think you probably need to...
Keep going.
Other two hours of things on our agenda. But the COG does have a forum where it invites the highway and other, you know, the road crew staff from all the towns in the twenty-one town area. And they have guest speakers on topics of interest to all the towns. So that could be something where you could say, this is what we're doing with the town road crew in Canaan.
Let's do that.
And even better, if you, if you identify some areas in some of these towns that are along local roads, they might be able to get after it right away.
Christian and I attended the Yukon Invasive Symposium in October and heard Doug Seigam from New Hampshire Highway Department on the subject of Japanese knotweed. He is not going to let knotweed take over New Hampshire. He's just determined that and he is achieving that. And I suggested to the new head of landscape design for the Connecticut DOT, Adam Boone, that we bring Doug Seigam to Connecticut and have sessions with the district board offices. So...
So that could be a forum for that.
We could come up with some excellent speakers. I think that's an exceptional, the last thing that should be said then, and thank you for being so tolerant. Corridors of rivers and roads and trails are basically the corridors of expansion paths of invasives.
Is that because of the sunlight? It's just exposure?
Yeah, it's available sunlight and there's a space there where birds can fly around and drop their seeds right down on the edge of the road.
And road sides have a lot of disturbance.
Yeah, it's light.
Well, I think, you know, it's obviously on our minds and it's been on our mind for a while and you've made a very compelling argument. And it's no question that it's something we'll put into our management plan.
Yeah, hey, good deal. Thanks.
Thank you for coming.
What's your name?
Joss. Joss Lanier. Christian...
Yeah.
Let's, let's talk about that, maybe something like that. Do you think as representatives of the Usatonic towns that your town governments would support allowing town crew a day or a half day to go to an invasive management workshop? Does that sound like...
Certainly make an effort. I mean, our job is, you know, we're an advisory group.
Yeah.
We have to, all we do is advise. So we will, you know, take this under review and I'm sure, it seems to me like there's a lot of advice to be given. And shared, knowledge to be shared. So we're just going to figure out how to do that.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks to you.
See you tomorrow, Tom.
You bet.
One o'clock.
We go on to the Moore Mondays?
Let's go on to the Moore.
Do you actually want me to, I can summarize these policy.
Yeah.
So there are a couple of policy issues have come up that we thought we should just discuss at the commission and agree on policies about. Would I keep the copy? The first one is about email distributions of agendas and minutes. And the policy suggestion here is that basically there'd be two distribution lists. One is HRC members only. And the other one would be is town clerks and anybody else who's interested in getting the agenda and minutes, which is basically how I had been, I have been functioning. Lynn Warner used to be on the list with HRC members, but I've taken her off. So, and then just to be clear, you know, as we all know, and I think, you know, that if you, if you respond to the HRC members list, you can talk about things like who's going to bring pie to the meeting. I would encourage that, in fact. But obviously, there's no discussion of agenda items. And I don't think, in my experience, that hasn't happened anyway and it isn't an issue. But I just wrote it here because I thought that should be clear. We could talk about it later, but the COG would like to get out of the business of sending out the agendas anyway.
I mean, Susan has agreed to take on responsibility and we realize that it might incur, might incur some extra costs, but we would like you to, I don't know if you need to really make a motion about it, but we would like you to, in terms of limiting the COG, their budget's been slashed.
So I'm sending out agendas and minutes, just the month we've been adjusting.
So you can, you know, you can send me the agenda, I'll look at it, do it together and mail it out to everybody.
So we just have to figure out how that.
But it's basically.
Paid something, so gotta figure out how that works.
I have to say, this is pretty pedantic because there's never been an issue with emails going out for our agenda and minutes until Judy Herkimer from HEAL asked for them to be sent to her as they always had been. And for some reason, Jocelyn was not able to do that, even though Lynn Warner got them. And now we've got a policy and it's the same with the policy on reimbursement for travel. I'm the only person other than Ting who's gotten travel expenses and you got it for wild and scenic when you went to Hartford.
Right.
And you didn't even fill out one of the expense forms. This personal one, like thirty days, I only knew two days before I went to Washington DC that this hearing was gonna happen. And I have to tell you.
But you weren't requesting.
When the Environmental Protection Agency.
You weren't requesting.
No, but I didn't even request any reimbursement. But it sounds like this is like gonna prevent people from going and doing what they feel like they need to do at the moment. I think it's pedantic. I don't think we as a commission needs to deal with that, with sixty dollars a year that, or sixty dollars in a lifetime that I got for gas money or the money you got for Hartford. You know, it just, policy stuff like this bores me to tears, but.
I think that was more like when we were doing the course of the seven months.
Well, you went to Hartford and you got, like, yeah, I believe it was close to, yeah, I would like to actually look that up, but.
We could look that up.
I'm just saying, I think this is a real waste of our time to be dealing with this.
I think it's good to have, I think it's good to have a policy. If you think the policy should be amended in some way, that's fine. But I think it is good to have a policy.
I think the policy will stand and we'll see where it goes. I mean, if that's the policy, that's the policy, but I find it pedantic.
Jocelyn, is this kind of policy being adopted in other regional entities throughout the Hurst County Council and other ones, or is it just with our commission?
I'm sure others have policies on these kinds of things, but I mean, I don't understand other.
Yeah.
I didn't know if it's like a standardization of some, like standard policy that goes.
No, no. They're just issues that have come up for various reasons and it seemed like it did sense to have a written policy, so.
It might cause less trouble.
I mean, does it mean that if someone did have to go do something on short notice, that it would be out of the question to get reimbursed or the exceptions?
Again, it's up to the, you can write in here that you would like.
I think that would be nice to have this as a standard, I mean, you know, very different people should give notice and do something on the commission.
Sure, I mean, I guess I put, I put thirty day, this was just a starting point for discussion if you wanna have a discussion about it, but thirty days, just because you only meet every thirty days if you want it approved by the entire commission, but if you wanna give the chair the ability to approve it in twenty-four hours in advance, you could discuss that as a.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's also, you know, there's a little bit of common sense here too. I mean, I think all of us, I know when I do a lot of inspections, you know, if we go and look at a piece of property or something like that, you're not charged, you know, nobody's charging the commission to do that. And if they're in their town, they go look at a piece of property or something, they drive ten miles or fifteen miles to do that. Nobody's getting reimbursed for driving here. I would recommend that everybody keep track of their own mileage and everything when you're going over federal taxes and everything, you can use that as a, as a, as a deduct, that's the way you sort of deal with that. What does everybody feel?
I think having a policy is a good idea. I'm not sure about the thirty days. It's pretty clear that something might come up, sort of an emergency thing where we want somebody, you know, like to.
You wanna put in some kind of a clause saying.
Well, you could also have a clause where it can be, I guess we have typically approved it later after the fact, but I'm in agreement with having a policy. I think the commission ought to.
Pardon me, you think?
No, in advance.
Yeah, I think it's good practice. This thirty days may be a little tight and I also think that we could have the chair be designated, I mean, we're not, as Lynn points out, we're not docking mega bucks here. And this is certainly something.
Why don't we put something in then that says that the chair or the vice chair can approve on short notice if necessary?
We could just say.
Does that make sense?
From the commission in advance of the trip.
The treasurer.
Yeah. If the treasurer agrees to raise the objection.
Yeah, right.
I think that sounds common sense.
Let's add that.
It's not like you don't all vote to accept that when somebody makes a suggestion after the fact. You know, before the fact determine how much money.
So how would we word that, Ward?
Well, I think you could just say must request permission from the chair or vice chair of the commission. And I would say instead of, say, thirty days in advance, just simply say in advance of the trip. And that should solve it.
Yeah. Because if something like that pops up, but then.
Well, you didn't know until.
Two days will, right, it'd been talked about.
But that wasn't even a request. I mean.
No, and I didn't even ask for.
Right. I mean, that's totally, I don't think we can refer to that as being part of.
Why don't we just say permission from the chair.
Permission from the chair.
Chair or vice chair of the commission in advance of the trip.
That sounds good.
Yep.
Are we all in favor of that? Take a motion to.
Well, as long as, as long as the expense is made clear in the committee.
Right.
Exactly.
As we've done.
Right.
And we continue that, obviously.
So do we need a motion to amend?
Okay, so, so moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call in favor?
All right. And then we need to.
That's the trouble.
Yep.
And the email, we need to take a vote on that as well.
We just had a motion to amend, so I think we need to have a motion to.
Always going to amend.
Oh, I mean, a motion to amend and then.
Oh, you were just amending the reimbursement?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
I thought we were just taking it as we just talked about amended.
Oh, I mean, we could do that. I thought it would be better to formalize it.
So your motion is to accept it as amended?
Oh, well, yeah, we could do that.
That's what I thought we were.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that.
Because we all understood.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
We can redo that.
No.
We all understand now?
Yeah.
Because amended.
We can engage it simple.
Yeah, okay. Take it easy.
Yeah.
So the email, I don't think we need to do any of that. Moving on. Your business. Okay, so one of the things that we've been talking a lot about is the coordination of the coordinating committee and try to plan a first meeting date. So Jocelyn dug up a lot of the old, we have the, does everybody remember the draft that we did of the Hurst County, whatever coordinating committee bylaws?
Yeah, there's two, two documents. One is the memorandum of understanding and then second is the bylaws. The bylaws is what we're in the operating.
Right.
I need a copy of what part sent.
Okay.
Is it just the membership portion?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Of what's proposed.
Ward, do you wanna speak to this or?
Well, there are two classes of members. One is the core members and these that propose, it's the commission itself, the Department of Interior, Deep Northwest COGS and Hurst County Valley Association. So those would be the core members. Again, this is following the pattern of the Westfield and also Farmington. And then there are what are called new members that are other organizations on the river that would be helpful in resolving issues that we think should be part of the discussion and we would invite them to join the coordinating committee. It's open to question and suggestion, obviously, as to who and those organizations would be and whether they'd be willing to serve. So we need to, in my view, number one, get the MOU circulated and signed. And then the first meeting of the coordinating committee, I think, would be to review the nominations for new members, for first to adopt the bylaws and review nominations for new members and elect those new members. And then have the next meeting be the larger group. Hopefully by then we'll be federally designated while it's.
But even if we're not?
Even if we're not, we agreed that.
We agreed on the last meeting that we wanted to get this rolling, so we had ourselves organized if in fact something happened.
Certainly, I think, on the strength of having it designated by the state.
Yeah.
The coordinating committee could be formed.
Absolutely.
And I gather from Liz Lacy, they might be willing to participate even if we're not. Yet. So bottom line is get the MOU circulated and signed. Second, have a meeting of the core members to adopt the bylaws and both the.
You're gonna need pie to get people.
Sorry?
You're gonna need pie to get people.
Yeah.
Would you know that you use?
Well, that would be, we could schedule it for October.
Well, that's what I was actually thinking, because at one point I was thinking September. But it seems like it's too soon, just a little bit.
Since we now have a meeting in August.
Right. So I was going to recommend, if the rest of the commission felt it was a good idea, to sort of shoot for October for this first meeting of the coordinating committee.
Do you wanna have it immediately prior to your river commission?
Well, I guess, you know, I guess what I'm hoping, hoping is that the actual HRC meetings and the wild and scenic coordinating committee, those meetings would be happening at the same time.
They could run concurrently.
Yeah. I sort of feel that that's.
So that would be the agenda for that one?
That's kind of what we're doing, right? And if there was something else that was pressing, we would deal with it. But that's the way I'd like to handle it.
Given our.
Yeah, I mean, we're not, we're not really changing anything by being wild and scenic at all. We're just trying to get input and find out the things that we need to be paying attention to and things like this that we really have some information that's very, very coaching for what we're trying to do. So do we wanna shoot for October?
This would be October tenth, that's the second Tuesday.
Does everybody like that?
Doing it concurrently.
Yeah, yeah, because we're volunteers, we have.
Well, we have no regulatory authority.
Right, and we're, yeah. So we can work, you know, we just have to start the process and then we're gonna figure out what that is. So that first, first meeting, we need to invite.
The board.
The board. And so perhaps.
Invite the river commission.
We're gonna be there anyway. It's a regular meeting. So would you perhaps get something out that would lay some very advanced notice for these people on that?
It's gonna be like a seven.
We'll just keep our same time. I've found that every time we've changed times, people, you know, we're creatures of habit, we just keep it at the same time.
I'll mention that it's pie month.
And it is pie month. Isn't October pie month? Yeah. So I think that'd be nice. I think it's fine.
Do you want?
What's really.
Hey, Jocelyn. You can send me an email with the email and just say.
Peach crop too.
How many people are coming and I'll bring.
Awesome, sounds good.
Okay, just, but just, you know, you have to hit me on the head in your mind, man. Give me an idea how many pies.
All right.
All right.
Sounds good.
Okay.
And also rethinking about what other organizations along the river might be invited to join.
Right.
Partly I think it's when we talk about our management plan, what are the issues on the river, who really needs to be at the table to have an amicable resolution to whatever those issues are.
Do we have an idea of, or an example of people we might know, right?
Well, we did, we made, we made some lists. And.
Those are the lists that you made up?
We kind of got into that.
That was two years ago.
There's some pretty.
This was, this was quite a while ago.
Like Trout Unlimited is on there, right?
Yeah. Our, what were the criteria? What were the criteria?
Well, we had two, the candidates demonstrated, it's in the bylaws, demonstrate the capacity to support the purpose of wild and scenic and as an entity likely to enhance the effectiveness of the committee. That's pretty broad. Being a fly fisherman, I think, or something like Hurst County, whether we would ever invite them, I don't know. But these are people who are concerned about the health of the river and have the ability to bring resources to our effort. That's the kind of thing that we are.
Or at least have a, you know, a seat at the table to talk about the issues and possibly support.
I mean, and everyone in the general public is gonna have an opportunity to attend these meetings and any organization that has, you know, could be black, heel, anybody that has an issue, they can bring them and they will be heard.
But I also think that there are opportunities, besides politically getting word out, for support if, for example, this, I think the towns really need to take care of this invasive management, but if there's some project that we see that needs funding and we have somebody on the coordinating committee who might be able to tap those resources, that would be helpful. Travel unlimited might be an example.
So we, the next issue is the review of the management plan goals and discuss the priority actions and issues to address over the next year. I would like to, you know, not, I'd like to have everybody get the handout that you emailed to me.
Yeah, and again, I just, I thought it.
You did a beautiful job.
I thought it might also just be good when you're thinking about the core meeting committee and the kinds of organizations that you want to be on it, to just have that as kind of short.
Lynn, did you get one?
A three-page.
Lynn, did you get one?
She got one.
Did still get ran a copy of it.
So why should I?
Already have, now I have two.
Yeah, what is in your management plan? And I, and I was, you know, I've been curious myself about which, you know, since this is a plan from two thousand and six, which of the, you know, issues that are in there have been already addressed by the commission, by the commission or by others? And which, which issues are of most interest to the commission members to work on most immediately? So I thought it'd just be good to have more of that.
So my recommendation is that, you know, since we're probably, not everybody on this commission is gonna sit down and read the entire management plan, at least take this handout that the council's provided here and let's look it over and let's try and find the things that were really keyed on, you know, we should be keying on. Okay? And let's bring this to September with some, a little zip. Okay? Everybody got that?
And I think it's a good suggestion that there may very well be things that you wanna add.
Well, absolutely.
That aren't already on here.
Like invasives.
Critical issues, right.
Well, it's the last item.
I put that at the top.
Oh, yeah, of course.
It's already the last item.
Yeah, there it is.
But we should have it...
I think what we want to do, right, is to establish what our priorities are among these, and sort of a timetable for addressing them in the coming years. Because we can't do it all.
It'd be really nice...
It was, you know, I'm sure have always meant to be sort of a tally plan, so...
It'd be really nice if at the October meeting, if we had a nice coherent list of things that we're going to be focusing on. So let's really make an effort so that we can maybe make that list at the September meeting. Okay? And let's winna this down to something that's, you know, somebody who's kind of in the making and say, oh yeah, this is what we're working on. Let's find out what the work is. So don't lose this. Well, does everybody have a management plan, by the way?
Yep.
And I think one other major point...
If you have something right now that you know we should be adding to this, you can speak up.
Well, I think there's one thing that we, if we've done it all already, we can take out right now is if we already have those river corridor zoning regulations established. I know North Canaan has established those regulations in 2015, and there was an effort at that time to adopt them in all the towns, so I don't know if...
The mapping, the money, what do you think?
Yeah.
Yeah, everybody got the maps, and I think everybody is on board.
I think the question is, so this is just a tiny table, one sentence summary, but the, in the management plan is, like, I think it's at least three or four pages of what the regulations should say. And I certainly haven't done, looked at all seven towns' regulations and tried to figure out whether they have all of the bits that were recommended. But I don't know, maybe everybody in their town knows what is in your Kushtonic River corridor regulations.
Do you think that we should, each town, you know, representative from each town should go and review those?
Well, we did in the application, that's what I thought, go to each town.
Yeah, we do have them all together.
Yeah. We do. The only one that seemed to be, and they're not really in the equation, is Sherman. That they're not part of the...
Yeah, they exist, but we didn't like analyze them.
No, that's true.
But we know they exist, we know they're, clearly, there are river regulations on them.
My view would be, if that really were something that we wanted to do, to review them all for consistency, I think there's where we should hire somebody, find some money to pay somebody to go through and see where they're...
We have some money.
Because it would be perfectly, and for any one of us, they'll say, oh yeah, are we all...
And maybe that isn't a priority.
I don't know.
Right, I mean, I don't know either.
I thought we made good progress.
Solberg's are pretty simple and pretty similar to earlier management plans.
Yeah, ours is the same.
You don't need to hire somebody to review them.
I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a problem. You brought it up because you felt it wasn't a problem.
Yeah, and we've kind of already crossed that bridge.
But what I'm saying is, there's obviously things in here that we have checked off to a certain extent. And there are some that haven't been checked off, but we want to prioritize. We just want to get it, it'd be nice to get a cohesive list of, well, we have a dozen things that we really feel... Each one of us took, say, half a dozen things that we feel are the most important things that we could be working on for the next year.
Or even two.
Or even two.
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody's on board with that?
Yeah.
Okay, going to old business, an update on the bend?
Yeah, the bend. I talked to Mike Juszczyk. We're waiting for a contract from First Light Ever Source that will allow them to begin work. A contract that's yet to be delivered by First Light Ever Source. And once they have that, they can begin the work, and then ultimately the town will take it over. But until First Light Ever Source delivers a draft, they can't start work.
The town will take over...
Is that the name?
Management of the site.
As in yearly maintenance or...
Yeah, maintenance and also the corridor bodies.
They don't take over the projects, they take over the...
Right. Yes.
Is there going to be an actual bathroom put in at the library and all that? Is that going to happen, or not really?
Well, don't take out all the shrubbery.
And how does that help me? How does that help someone like me?
Let's say it's a work in progress, the whole business of getting that piece of property to the town or law, and eventually to have a, to have some kind of a facility in place. That's been the goal, and I think it's going to happen.
But one important development is that there is a study being conducted for a wastewater treatment facility for West Palm Beach. Yes, because when you look at how, that, those wells and those septic tanks are laid out, if it were today, they wouldn't have proved. And the theory is that it would be helpful to everyone in West Palm Beach for a wastewater treatment facility. So, that's a study that's being undertaken by the town.
And there's nothing now, please?
There's nothing now. It's all septic and wells, as Ben knows.
Villerson, New York, has nothing, too.
Villerson has nothing?
They have nothing in a lot of towns.
Wow.
Yeah, and it's like, okay.
Because they've got a real downtown.
Yeah, it's like downtown Canaan.
Yeah, you don't want to know where that's going to be.
That is pretty bizarre. I didn't know why it was all... Oh, Benji, that's cute.
Floods must be happening in ten months.
Perfect name for what he does.
Okay, any other views on that? So, you guys, no. The Kent River Road Access.
So the gate is there.
Oh!
I've never seen it closed. We were down there the other weekend. There's new signs up, I think they were put up by the Appalachian, the Appalachian Trail people. No swimming, no alcohol, no...
Fun.
No fun.
That's the same sign that Sharon put up.
And there were people swimming and drinking and having fun anyway. But, I mean, I didn't see anything, there wasn't a problem. There were probably...
A dozen?
Yeah. And they were tubing, they had families there.
Many cars.
Not that many cars. Well, they married on the other side, but there's probably only four or five cars.
Is that what they were objecting to? The cars were, or is it the people?
And they did sort of designate one area for hiking and parking. And I think that is part of the problem, is if they close the gate, the people who park down there are not going to be able to get their cars out. So I don't know if anybody really thought that through. I mean, if the gate's closed, you're going to park where the gate is, and that's where the trail turns off the road. But if you're already parked down there, and you come out from your weekend trip, and the gate's closed, you kind of had a luck. So, the gate's there, it wasn't closed, there are new signs up. And, you know, it says, "Take care of the place." So I think that can only help. I think that's what it's at right now. There's no gate on the east side. Off to us, but I don't know. That's on the east side.
Yes. Yeah. Between DE and GE, I press.
All right, moving on, GE settlement and PCB update news, do you have anything for us?
There's always a ton of things.
Of course.
And for her time, or I don't seem to have the expertise to present it quite right. I mean, every, every month we get pages and pages of documents submitted to the repositories, everything from letters that go back and forth between the engineer for GE and the engineer for EPA, talking about whether or not they're going to test this or do that, to the verbal pool surveys on a certain property. It's mind-boggling, and I see why everybody fogs over if I start talking about it.
But anything, anything in particular that would affect us directly in our neck of the woods?
Well, actually, a lot of it does, and a lot of it I've talked about in the past. For example, the Teleelectric dam, which we wrote comments on.
Good.
And that's going to be part of the tour, which will take place tomorrow in Pittsfield. And I'm sure you all, you know, were looking and hoping you could go this year, because it's always fascinating. Ting's been to some. Woods used to come to a lot, Jesse Klingonfield has come to quite a few of those. And I've gone to every one for the last seventeen years. And there's always something interesting. I've talked a lot in the past about Silver Lake. And there's nothing really new on that, but you never know what you're going to discover on these tours. They're also going to show us the proposed Walmart location on the PETA property, which was a former GE manufacturing site. And also, they're going to start residential removal actions on the rest of the river, which are always interesting to see which homes along the river are being remediated. And interesting things like Building 59, which is the only building really that's left there, which is where General Electric has their offices. And I've been in there a couple of times, but they're telling us that we should not go on that site, because they get a little upset. And they found a plume of solvent sampling groundwater wells. And it was, it runs adjacent to the building, but they also identified vapor intrusion risks into the building. And now they have a sub-slab depressurization system that they put in last year to prevent the vapor from accumulating under the building and making the poor GE people sick. So, there's always interesting things like that.
Remember the tour when they had the, they had, they were trying to repurpose some of their spaces, and they actually thought that they were going to be putting a film studio in a site, probably the building that you're talking about? Do you remember all that, and all the development that they were doing?
Yeah, it wasn't that building, but yeah, it is. There are also, then, part of this tour is a self-guided tour, which is going to include the three proposed landfill sites, which was the biggest and most contentious part of the hearing in DC. And there's a fantastic newspaper article that talks in detail about the entire hearing, even a picture of the building it was in. Great pictures of some of the presenters and stuff in here. And I would love to email that to anybody who would like to know how to get a copy of it, because it's well worth reading this article, it tells you all about the whole experience there in DC, which was pretty cool. And there's also maps of the three proposed landfill sites, which you're all familiar with, I'm sure, but...
Can you get that online?
Yeah. I can get that and...
Can you just word that to me?
And we'll send this to you, because it's a marvelous article, it is like seven pages. But it does include a lot...
Send it to everybody.
According with our email policy.
With a picture of a pond. All right. Any mutual concerns and future agenda items? I have a mutual concern.
I do, too.
Okay, I'd like to start out with mine, if I could. And it's Woods Sinclair. Do we have any info on that, or...
Your phone, any text?
Yeah, just how is he doing?
I just was in the office at the school today and heard you said, was doing very well. I didn't, I had...
I've written to him a couple of times, and I've gotten no response.
Taken a serious call, he is obviously in very rush, and so, I don't know where he is.
Yeah, I've heard equally bad news. I don't believe so. But I was going to call Mary Lou, because I'm on the Connecticut Chestnut Foundation, thanks to Woods, and I'm concerned about the condition of the orchard, which she usually maintains. I imagine that Carl is doing a lot of work relating to that now.
But Carl's not around.
Oh, really?
He's, he hasn't been at a meeting in...
Eight years.
Probably close to, he's doing a project in Jamestown, Rhode Island.
Oh, I didn't realize.
Multi-jillion dollar project here, and he's not even living around here.
So I better call Mary Lou on that point, but that's really concerning. I mean, Tom and Phil and I have a meeting tomorrow at one o'clock for the urban landscape committee at the high school. We weren't expecting him because of that condition, so...
Now, he hasn't responded to anything, and I've...
I don't think he's capable of, you know, answering some things.
And, I mean, I'm hoping that Carl will be coming back at some point. I don't know how long this cloud could go on, but we have no false voyage rep now.
And are we going to get a second Sharon rep?
Well, that is on next on the list. You know, I was holding out, because I was hoping that, you know, we would not have to do that. Because I really like having, you know, a science teacher on board, you know, as many scientists as possible. But I'm putting, I put the word out to my selectmen. All right, who else has a mutual concern?
Mutual concern, Gordon, how much did we donate to fire department for attendance in this building?
Last time we did twenty-five bucks.
I have a move that we do the same twenty-five dollars in the commission for the fire department. For the use of building.
I was going to say, second? Who's second?
Gordon.
Ford.
I say a motion, all in favor? I oppose. Any other? In that case, I'll take a motion. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Steve, is this the, this the sign that you have now that you're...
Thanks for coming.